The meeting is called to order at, I'm sorry, 7:03 PM. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda, oh, excuse me. Will we please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got ahead of myself there. All right, may I have a motion and a second that the agenda of March 27, 2018 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, no treasurer's report tonight, special report, textbook presentation, oh, there you are, hello.
So, yes, this evening we'll invite Nicole Whitehead up and Dan?
Baker.
Yes, Dan Baker, thank you. And you're gonna walk us through a little bit for the AP chemistry textbook.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. So, this process began in the fall when we realized that we needed to update our textbook to stay within AP guidelines. Certain courses have a requirement that the textbook be within a certain number of years. So, we needed to find an update, so we started the process by looking at a bunch of different books, Mr. Baker, with the help of Mr. Kruger and Ms. Waterson, but Mr. Baker really spearheaded it because he's our AP chemistry teacher this year. So, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Mr. Baker. He's also a Miami of Ohio graduate, just like myself, so we've got that connection there. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Baker.
Thanks, Nicole. Thank you all for having us here tonight. The big highlights of the textbook are just that, of all the ones that we looked at, this textbook is the most aligned to the new AP chemistry curriculum, which came out in 2013. So, we were really excited to see that alignment of both the curriculum as well as the questions in that book to assess the assessment, which was great. The other best thing that comes with this textbook is integration of online resources, which are becoming really big in colleges these days, both online formative assessments as well as access to an e-text and videos that came along with this textbook. So, seeing both of those things integrated really kind of pushed this book over the top compared to some of the other ones we had seen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Board members, any questions or comments? Well, yes, thank you.
I think the board would like if you could ask them some AP chemistry questions.
Yeah, sure. Actually, since Claire's here, she'd be really happy to go for this.
It's made by Claire.
Put her on the spot.
Thank you.
There you go.
I shouldn't have started this.
Oh, hey, it's okay. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. If you have any questions, we have a copy of the book over there and probably one at District Office, and that's the one from District and Library, so.
Very good.
Light reading, you know.
Yes, of course.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you too. Have a good night. All right. Visitor speaking time. Time is provided within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiations since it is not proper for the board to discuss these issues in public session. A request to speak comment form must be filled out prior to the start of the citizens' comment period and given to the district clerk. It is expected that speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on the citizens' comment period based on the length of the agenda. Written communication to the Board of Education is encouraged as well. And tonight we have Mr. Palladore. If you would like to come up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and allowing me some time to speak. Members of the school board and Penfield residents, I'd like to thank President Dean first for responding to my March 18th and 20th emails and that correspondence. I really appreciate that. My purpose here tonight is the same as it was on March 13th, which is school safety. On March 13th and in my March 18th written statement, I stated that due to the epidemic of school violence, the safety of our children must be the number one priority by our administrators, state officials. We must overcome financial challenges to achieve this goal and have at least one school resource officer in all six schools in our district. Sadly, on March 20th, just one week after our last meeting, the value of a school resource officer at Great Mills High School in Maryland was shown. The SRO engaged the shooter in one minute, directing him to drop the gun, then firing one round, which actually hit the gun the shooter was holding. At that point, the shooter sadly took his own life. The SRO is definitely a hero. He is credited with containing the situation and deterring further violence. Per my statement last meeting, deterrents work, and for those small percentage, that they unfortunately don't stop from acting, they can eliminate or minimize a potential situation or damage. On top of these discussions, I've also made contact with the State Senate and I'm reviewing the many bills and proposals that have been submitted in order to keep our children safe, such as S-7811A and S-7810A to create a school resource officer education aid program and grant availability sponsored by Senator Pat Galavan. The Senator stated, "As a former state trooper and Erie County Sheriff, I believe strongly in the SRO program as a way to enhance school safety. In addition to providing security, these trained law enforcement officers build relationships with the school community by working with administrator staff, students, and parents to help identify safety issues, train personnel, and resolve conflicts before they become more serious. It is time to expand this program and provide resources so that every school can benefit from having an SRO on site." Senator Feldman also stated that a specially trained armed police officer stationed at the entrance of every school provides instantaneous security. They are deterrent to murderers who seek to kill our children. It's a very strong statement, but I think it, I think it underlines what we've seen. So, I am, as always, aware that this is not a question and answer period information that may or may not be given, or can be, and I'm very aware of that and I understand. But I think this topic needs to continually be brought up, and this evening I have two questions that may or may not be able to be answered. The first one is, is that with last meeting and with the prior incident, why is school safety, unless I'm missing something, absent from the meeting and agenda for this evening? And secondly, if the state fails to provide adequate funding, and this is an option we'd like to move forward with, which I hope we would, as those provisions only provide $50,000 per school district, does the district have a plan to provide SROs at each school? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palladore. Dr. Putnam, do you have any comments?
Just, John, I appreciate it. I took notes on what you had to say, and as always, if you want to reach out to me, we can have another conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. Claire?
So, these past weeks, at Harris Hill, kindergartners welcomed spring with their annual teddy bear parade, and students showed off their research during the Independent Project Gala, where students covered a large range of subjects that fit their interests. At Cobles, the Creekside Steel Drum Band, author Aaron Reynolds, and the Goodwin Academy of Irish Dance paid a visit to Cobles over the past two weeks. And at Indian Landing, fifth graders watched the RPO at the Eastman Theater during a morning performance. Students also showed off their amazing talents during the Indian Landing Talent Show and Kindergartners welcomed spring with their own way with the annual Spring Bonnet Parade. Students wore crazy socks last week in honor of the 3/21 World Downstream Drum Day, and students at Indian Landing also accomplished their goal of reading 1 million minutes by the end of March and will be celebrating this Thursday by dressing up as their favorite book characters. At Scribner, girls kick-started their Scribner Girls on the Run campaign in support of positive healthy living, and Scribner is also promoting Healthy Hearts during their annual Jump Rope for Heart campaign as well, in order to keep active and raise money for the American Heart Association. At Bay Trail, students worked with Dr. Putnam to discuss ideas regarding the 17 Acts of Kindness, and parents and community members are visiting Bay Trail this week in order to share their careers and inspire their students. And at Penfield High School, students put on an amazing performance of Cinderella this past weekend with students working backstage, playing instruments in the pit, and singing onstage. And students also, some students also attended an inspirational conference at Churchville Childi, which left them feeling inspired and empowered. And also, an update on the Penfield Strong Day and National Walkout Day that we had on Wednesday, March 14th. Students across the district participated by wearing red and writing letters to senators, and the response was amazing, especially in a high school, which I noticed, and we had many students in the middle and high school taking action to promote school safety. And the letters to our congressmen will be most likely sent to their respective offices this week.
Very nice. Thank you, Claire. Board members, any questions or comments for Claire? Just one comment, you said the students celebrated the arrival of spring?
Yeah.
Okay, did they bring spring with them? All right, well, thank you. You did a nice job, as always, appreciate it. All right, superintendents report, reports.
So, this evening we have student and staff honors, as well as a brief overview of our district attendance procedures, and then I'll turn it over for Dr. Sansoucy to talk about the benefits budget review for the 1819 budget planning, as well as the total and revenue budget review by Dr. Sansoucy. So, before I start, I would just like to mention to Claire that I am very, very proud, I sent lots of tweets about it, but very proud of the work the students came up with on March 14th at the high school and at Bay Trail. But the ideas the high school students had about making it a full day and encouraging all students and staff across the district to wear red and showcase that unity was really powerful. So, thank you very much, and if you could bring that back to the students who helped plan with you, I just know that it was spectacular. We got a lot of positive feedback, including from other school districts who were really impressed that our events were planned by students, and they just thought that was very impressive. So, thank you very much. We have some great awards and reports, so congratulations to a couple of Bay Trail students, Anna Coyle and Elizabeth Turley, on earning first and third place honors in the Webster VFW Post Annual Patriots Pen Contest. Anna's essay went on to earn fourth place at the state level. So, great, great students writing on a great cause. National Walkout Day, as we just talked about, Bay Trail and Penfield High School students participated in the National Walkout Day on March 14th by engaging in a number of activities that allowed them to express their concerns about school safety. Kudos to the students who helped plan and organize these activities at both buildings. I gotta remember that every time I move it on my screen, I also have to push the button, so get there. But just an update, we had last Monday a panel on the opiate epidemic in Monroe County and across the state, just a great partnership with Monroe County, and there's a panel discussion. The expert panel provided valuable information on this growing crisis and how it's affecting individuals of all ages from all areas, and the presentation was filmed, thanks to Kevin, the cameraman behind all these board meetings, and the presentation's now available on the district website for those who couldn't attend, and I encourage you to go and at least, if you don't have time for the whole panel, just listening to Dr. Mendoza's presentation around the opiate epidemic. He's on the Monroe County Opiate Task Force and is the Monroe County, sort of Monroe County physician, and he's also a parent of some students in a neighboring district, and he really is easy to listen to and really great information, so I think parents of all ages and teenagers should take a look. This one is my last update here, but just really impressive, is that Scribner students raised $13,000 for the American Heart Association during their recent Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser. I actually had to reach out to see if that was a misprint and it was 1,300, but it's not. They raised $13,000 for Jump Rope for Heart. So, that's a lot of jump roping and a lot of donations from students and their families, obviously. So, kudos for Scribner Road School, obviously our kids who care.
Definitely.
That's the end of my staff and honors, staff and student honors. I also want to talk a little bit about district attendance procedures. Ms. Chidzie brought this up last meeting, which was a great question, on just sort of what we're doing in Penfield around attendance, especially with the tragedy that took place in the Rochester City School District, and obviously, our hearts go out to that student's family. So, just a little bit of information, we do currently have a policy, it's 7110, it's our comprehensive student attendance policy, which is, attendance is required by state law and New York State regulation, and so Penfield, right out of that policy, is Penfield is committed to the philosophy that every student should attend class every day, and but what we're currently doing now internally is reviewing our current attendance procedures for best practice inconsistency, K-12, and that's something that's gonna take a little bit of time, but whenever we have a situation, we obviously want to take a look at our practices, what we're doing, is it aligned to the policy, and while we do that on an annual basis with lots of things, this is one we're looking at right now. So, just wanted to share a little bit with both the board and the community that we do have building-level procedures at the beginning and the end of school, which are relatively unique to Penfield, so I want to point them out, is that at every K-5 building, and our middle school and our high school, we have staff members assigned to greet students and buses in the morning, and then sometimes the same staff, other times different staff to dismiss students to their buses in the afternoon. And if you've ever been there in the morning for drop-off or pickup, you can see that. When you start at the elementary school, it's typically the principal, teaching assistants, and some teachers, and when you hit, that's at the elementary level, when you hit the middle school and the high school, it's now the administration, hall monitors, as well as sometimes teachers. And so, building staff members, their role really is, one, is culture and climate, is to be a happy face when students arrive to school, but secondary is they're monitoring students entering and exiting the building. It's not unheard of, especially at the high school level, for a student to ride the bus to school, but maybe want to then run down to Dunkin' Donuts or somewhere to get a cup of coffee. We don't allow that, which is one of the reasons why we have people, especially at the high school, to stop students. Our belief is, when a parent, no matter how old the student is, puts that student on a bus, they're now on school property, and their expectation is they're going to school. And so, many times at the beginning of the year, a student will say, "My mom or dad is fine with it." They might be, but you gotta go into school, we've gotta call and talk to your parents, so if a student has maybe, it happens with seniors, seniors can earn late arrival if they don't have a class, but if you come to school on the school bus, you're not allowed to leave even though you have late arrival. And so, it's something that we take very seriously, because if I'm a parent and I put my student on the bus, even if they're in 12th grade, my expectation is they're at school. And so, that's one of the reasons why, and we have people out monitoring the bus drop-off and dismissal. The other piece with this is around attendance record-keeping, and so, this is outlined in our policy, is that attendance for students in grades K to 5 is recorded once a day, which is shortly after students arrive to the classroom, but for 6 through 12, middle school and high school, attendance is recorded for each period of scheduled instruction. So, it's not just once, it's throughout the day they take attendance. And then, attendance is submitted via Infinite Campus, our student management system, and it's reviewed. Each building has an attendance clerk, whose sole role during that time is to review attendance, and that comes into this next last slide, which is around attendance notification. So, building attendance clerks cross-check students marked absent by the teacher with the list of students with excused absences. So, example, the largest one is around prior notification from a parent or guardian. My son's sick, I call in, I leave a message for the attendance clerk that says, "My son is sick today, he won't be in school." So, if we have that message by voicemail or by email from a parent, then we don't call home to check on the student. So, that, just I mentioned, is that partnership is really important with parents, and whatever we can do, many of our schools have already sent out email reminders to parents about if you know your child's going to be home and not in school, calling us to let us know saves us time, because then we don't have to make the phone call home to check on them. And the next piece is, why that's important, is we do not use a robocall system that just sends out blanket calls. Our attendance clerks actually make individual personal phone calls to each student who is absent, if we don't have a reason for them to be absent in our system. So, what that means is that K-5, our four K-5 buildings, attendance is submitted by about 9:00 AM, and then calls are typically completed by 10:00 AM. So, we really try to strive for that first hour to make calls. I'm very, trying to be transparent, to say that there are days where there's a large attendance, a lot of absences, and those calls might come later. What we tend to find now, especially in March, it's near the end of the year, and, you know, parents sometimes forget to call in. We're much better in the beginning of the school year, near the end of the year, sometimes parents and guardians just forget to call in, and therefore, there's more calls to make. We're also obviously, hopefully, at the tail end of flu season, but when we have anything like the flu or the bug that goes around, we have a larger attendance and the calls do take a little bit longer. For 6th through 8th grade at the middle school, attendance are checking after second period. So, they're really looking for that consistency piece, and if they're not there first period, at the beginning of second, they put attendance in, and then calls are started, and they still wrap up around 10:00 AM, is always the goal. The high school's a little different, because we do have high school students in at least two grade levels also drive, and so they have cars. The high school is much closer to some local businesses, where people may want to go grab something to eat, and so they actually check attendance after second period, and then after fifth period, and then after seventh period, to look for that consistency. So, they actually make calls throughout the day, the most calls are made after second period, so they wrap up at about 9:30, but then they're also calling around, I'm sorry, around 9:00, but then they also call around 10:30 and around 1:00 o'clock. So, I am sure that every student has a reason why they're not in all of their classes, but every once in a while at high school, that doesn't always happen, and so it's nice that our attendance clerks take it seriously in our calling throughout the day. So, if a student shows up in the morning, but then all of a sudden isn't in classes, they're making that call to check on that student. And sometimes, a parent may, this does happen, a parent will come and pick up their child for a doctor's appointment, but not notify the school that's what's happening, and so those calls are made. But many times, it's because students are not where they're supposed to be, and we're gonna call about that. So, that sort of wraps up sort of what we're doing now, but also, we're looking at all of these procedures to determine if there's anything we can do differently. One of the things we are doing, that I'm doing now, is I've already reached out to area superintendents to see what their process looks like. BOSI's 1 is doing a bit of a review, so they're collecting information, and that's where I really learned the one thing that's sort of unique to Penfield so far that I found is having staff outside when buses drop off and at dismissal. That isn't happening everywhere, and we just find, it's just what we've always done, and I think it's a great practice that we're gonna continue to do, because having those adults out does two things, as I mentioned, it's climbing culture to the building, it's that smiling face when you show up on a cold day, or on Monday, when not everybody wants to come into school, obviously, except for me, we all love going to school, and then, and then at the end of the day too, to, you know, be out there when kids are leaving. So, I hope this helps a little bit. I don't have a question slide, but this is my last slide, if there are any questions.
Okay, board members, any questions or comments? John?
I noticed today they were even out there when it was 40 degrees and raining, so it works, and I certainly, as a parent, appreciate you looking into this, so.
And then, these are, Dr. Putnam, longstanding, this is longstanding procedures, this is how it's been done?
Yeah, this is how, this is sort of connected to the policy, and then also, in reaching out to each building principal and talking through what they currently do. So, this, the last couple slides are what our current practices are, but with everything we do, we always want to review and see if there's anything we can tighten up. Ideally, ideally, we want to, when we know a student is absent, or we believe a student is absent, we want to make sure that we're calling as soon as possible. We have looked a little bit, I'll tell you, at the robocall system. The concerns I'm hearing about that is when you don't get a live person, if there's ever a wrong number in the system, you don't know where it's going. So, in this day and age, people change their cell phones, they, you know, make, get rid of their home number and go to a cell number, and people aren't always great at notifying the school district when those numbers change. And so, if it's actually a person calling and leaving a voicemail, or trying a second number, if they want to get through to somebody, that's helpful to us to keep our system up to date as well.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you.
And I'll now turn it over to Dr. Sansoucy around the budget.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight's presentation is the benefits portion of the budget, as well as a quick look at where we're at with regard to totals and revenue. As you know, we won't really know where we're at with regard to revenue until probably the end of this week, but we'll do some foreshadowing and talk a little bit about how that looks. So, as you know, as we all well know by now, I always begin every one of these presentations with a discussion of district goals, those of academic achievement and excellence, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. Tonight's presentation around benefits really crosses all of those areas, because these are benefits for everyone that works in the school district. So, all of the, as I think I've pointed out, as we've done all of the previous presentations, the majority of our budget is for staff. We're a people business, schools are about teachers in front of kids in classrooms, and that means that the majority of our budget is for people. We provide benefits, some by law and some by contract, to those folks, and this portion of the budget discusses that. Also in this budget, we start to move into the portions of the budget where we'll be presenting as we move forward, to PTAs, to the community, to Rotary. We'll have one more budget presentation, one more big formal budget presentation after adoption and before the vote, and as part of that, we always like to remind folks where Penfield stands with regard to what they're paying for, essentially. All four of Penfield's elementary schools are in the top 14 in the Rochester area in 2017, based on four years of test scores. Bay Trail, obviously, and the high school, also highly ranked, Bay Trail number three out of 95 area middle schools, the high school, again, and for, once again, in Newsweek's list of the best American high schools, and the district itself ranked number four out of the 67 area school districts, based again on test scores. These first couple slides are about test scores, they're the, they are the, sort of the, one of the, one of the ways that we're judged, we're judged this way in public. Realtors pay attention to this, certainly parents do, it's not the be-all and end-all of who we are, but it is an important component of our program and of the grading of our program. So, 97% graduation rate, very competitive SAT scores, and 96% of our graduates earning a region's diploma. Not just about test scores, I know the board's concern and focus on the whole child, we're one of the, once again, one of the best communities for music education, are at the Science Olympiad this year, the high school team earned 40 medals at the regionals and six medals in state competition, and this year's boys volleyball and wrestling teams were state champions, along with numerous county and sectional championships. So, we like to point that out as we move into the budget, we've talked about the various components of the budget that support that. That budget really is the financial expression of the program that supports those outcomes. We've been working at this since early October, when we established the budget calendar. We've moved through a number of presentations, began the formal presentations in January. We've moved through a number of presentations, began the formal presentations in January, moved through January and February presenting and talking about components of the budget. At the last meeting, March 13th, we reviewed the BOSI's budget. Tonight, we'll talk about benefits and take that early look at where we're going to end up. We'll approve and adopt on April 17th. The, as you can see, this is where we're at with regard to the, to date with regard to the budget. Tonight's presentation's a significant one, nearly $25 million or about 26% of the total budget pie. That's $25,170, it's going up by about $700,000, just under 3%. Driven in part, the largest percentage increase really by increase in payments to the teacher's retirement system. So the, this is the graph of the rates for the teacher's retirement system over time. The system itself depends on, all teachers, all full-time teachers are obligated to be members of the teacher retirement system. People who are not teachers, non-certified staff, are members of the employee's retirement system. So everybody's in one or the other system. Teachers, obviously, the largest share and those rates are going up. As you can see, they, they were hot, they were around 20% for a very, very long time and then began to fall. The system itself depends on income, on income from three sources really. Employees pay a portion of their salary into the system. The, the system invests the money that it has on hand and those returns help support the system and what's left over is the obligation of the school district. So when the market really began to heat up, rates fell and rates fell dramatically, as you can see. They've been climbing ever since, up and down, but I think the message there is that stock market performance is really a major driver of this portion of our budget. And what's happening now is rates are increasing. So they've gone from about 9.3% of salaries to about 10.6, 10.7% of salaries for next year and that drives a significant increase. They're heading back up probably to a more normal, normal not being necessarily welcome, but more normal long-term rate. As you can see, for three decades, '60s, '70s and '80s, they were in the 20% range. For the '90s and 2000s, they fell, but they've been creeping back up, working their way back up, I think, to that more normal range. The system's adopted lower benefit rates, Tier 6 and so on, so it probably won't return to those, to those rates from the '60s to the '80s. But I think depending on the stock market, which is sort of a scary place these days, it's reasonable to believe that they're going to continue to increase. You have more detail on this in your packet, but this is the summary of that. You can see that the increases in this budget really are employees' retirement, teacher retirement, as well as medical insurance, the value, the increase in the cost of health insurance for all of our employees, budget to budget around 3%. Workers' compensation insurance for us is falling sharply for this year, mostly because this is a bit of a return to what I hope over time will be closer to normal. Workers' compensation's based on a three-year average of losses and three, four years ago now, we're in the, this would be year three, we had a very bad year for workers' comp and we've been carrying that unusually bad year in our, in our history. It falls off for this year, along with it, our rates go down. So as long as our losses remain sort of normal to stable and we don't have a return of that bad year, hopefully that won't go back up and we'll have the benefit of the lower rate as we go forward. Overall though, you add up all those changes, 712,000, 2.9%. And that brings us here. Nothing really dramatic going on in this budget in terms of year-over-year changes. So with that, we can, we can begin to put the puzzle together. We know about where we will be at with regard to the expense side of our budget, but that's only half, right? That's only half our budget. We need a revenue side to be able to finish this process and move forward with something that we can talk to the taxpayers about. And that's going to depend on the state adopting their state budget on March 29th. With that, we'll be able to put together, finalize a revenue budget in time for adoption on April 17th, the public hearing on the first and the vote on May 15th. The reason that's consequential is because about a quarter of our budget is supported by state aid. 65% of our budget's supported by the taxpayers and 8% is just about everything else in the budget. And we know that the levy's capped, so our levy growth is based on, for this year, on 2% in terms of the allowable levy growth factor, so the lesser of inflation or 2%, whichever's less. Inflation's exceeded 2% now for this year, so we'll be capped at 2. That, along with the tax-based growth factor, turn, and some carryover that we brought over from last year, means that we cannot exceed without a supermajority vote, 2.78% or about $1.7 million in this year's budget. That number may change a little bit, I'll spend the time between this meeting and the next one reconfirming a number of things, including pilot agreements, those affect the tax cap. I have an estimate so far in all our tax cap calculations and in the revenue side of the budget for pilots, and I know there's a big one that will be coming online that the Penfield Town Assessor did not have final numbers for, that's the, that hotel on Panorama Trail. So that wasn't open last year in time for taxable status day, it is this year, so it'll be on the rolls. I need a final value and the final value of the pilot and that could affect where we end up as well. Then capital exclusions, just always need that one last look. So that levy limit is affected by those pilots, so that could go up or down a little bit, but we need to sort of wrestle that in place by the time we adopt really because those estimates should go into the adopted budget. With that said, so some moving parts still out there, but with estimates based on the governor's budget, we're told that they're looking at a number of, quite a bit higher actually, in terms of state aid to schools than the governor's budget proposed. But using the governor's budget, using pilots based on my estimate, this is where we're at with the overall budget. An expense side just at 3%, $2.8 million, and revenue based on that 2.8% cap and state aid at the governor's estimate of about $98 million. Leaves us about $300,000 difference or short. Well, I think the, that's not unusual for this time of year. We'll wait and see where we end up with regard to the, to the governor's budget, recraft what we need to, that's within the realm of possibility. So I, I think it's, you know, it's always concerning. I'd like to, I'd like to be in balance right now, but we're not and we'll see how we do as we, as we go forward. That's the other most important thing. You know, the budget's sort of interesting, I think, to people, that they, they are interested in the level of increase and what drives the budget, but what people really care about is the tax rate, the, the change in taxes from year to year. And as the board knows, that's driven by changes in assessment and changes in the equalization rate. And this is a very unusual year for changes in the equalization rate. So we have six towns that compose our school district, so Brighton, Penfield, Macedon, Walworth, Parenton and, who am I missing? And Pittsburgh, thank you, a little piece of Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh isn't changing, but it's a teeny component of our school district, it's a truly teeny portion. They are at 100% equalization, they're going to remain at 100%. Brighton, as, as you know, is reassessing this year and they're moving back to 100% after falling to 89% for 1718. So that equalization rate represents, just to remind the public and the board, the equalization rate really represents the state of New York's, the Department of Equalization and Assessments' estimate of what the home value, of what the assessments in the town represent as part, as opposed to the market or real value of the property. So for example, when Brighton was at 89% assessment, that's the state of New York saying that, that those homes, overall, on average, not necessarily an individual home, but on average the homes are assessed at about 89% at what they would sell for at an arms-length transaction. That means that the, the market has increased faster than the, than the assessments have in the town, either because assessment hasn't kept up or it's time for a reassessment or it's just a really hot market. The state keeps track of this because all sales are reported and they know the value of sales versus the value of the existing assessment and they make annual judgments about that. That judgment's the equalization rate. Penfield is falling from 100% to 95%. Macedon and Walworth are falling to 98%. Parenton is going to reassess this year to stay at 100. They were told if they did not reassess that they would fall as well. So what that means to me is that uniformly across the school, across our school district, the value of homes is increasing more rapidly than the, than the assessments are changing. It's, I think, just anecdotally, we see that happen. Houses go for sale on the market, the sign goes up and then the sign goes down. You know, we anecdotally hear about houses selling for, at and beyond their assessed valuations. So this is, this is the, sort of the expression of that anecdote in the, in the community. What it means though is it's, we need to have good information on assessments and then the final equalization rates in order to be able to calculate that, those tax rates that people care about. Generally, the rising equalization rate in Brighton will tend to lower their tax rate. The falling rates in the other towns will tend to drive those rates up. So the taxes, the burden of the taxes moves from town to town proportional to their share of the total full value of the property. So this is going to be a complicated year, I think, and, and a difficult one to explain as we move through it. So we'll see what that brings as we move forward. Overall though, what, we can't control the equalization rate and we can't control assessment. You know, we are, we're consumers of that information, we're affected by it, we use it, we explain it, we talk a lot about it. Our, our taxpayers are concerned about it, but we don't control it. What we do control is the levy, which is the amount of taxes that the district collects. And you can see that over a 10-year average, our levy increase has been 1.8%. So I think we've done a good job of controlling what we can control and you can see the rate in our largest town, Penfield, the rate being the expression of the way you collect the taxes, dollars per thousand of assessed value of the homes in the district, so homes and businesses. So that, while that's moved around based on equalization and on assessment, we're at 1.8% for 10 years on the levy. So with that, also on the ballot, just to remind the board and begin to make that shift to the, to the discussions we'll be having as we move forward, number of things that voters will be confronted with as they move into the, into the polling booth this year. Three members of the Board of Education will be elected for three-year terms. There'll be a proposition approving the general fund budget, what we've been talking about. We'll seek voter approval for the purchase of six buses, I'm sorry, seven buses, 366 passengers and 430-passenger buses. And also the proposition for our capital improvement project for the elementary additions project, building alterations and additions, addition of four classrooms at Cobles, Indian Landing, Scribner, renovations at Bay Trail and the high school totaling $22.5 million, $7 million of that from capital reserve. We're coming quickly up on the elementary additions project, Community Information Night, that's been scheduled for Monday, April 23rd here at the high school in the Commons. And of course, the, the final vote for that will be on May 15th in the high school gym for all those propositions and for election of board members on May 15th, following the budget hearing on May 1st. All of this information, quick links information, more information about the capital project is all at the, at our website, penfield.edu under quick links. And if there are any questions about tonight's presentation about where we're going, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Board members? John?
Question mark on, on the, I've, I've been exchanging some emails with Joe Morelli's staff person and they seem to be still optimistic to meet things by or during Good Friday or Saturday. What are you hearing on your end?
I think I hear that as well, that, you know, Passover and Good Friday begin on, on Friday, so they need to be out of town in time for that. I, it's, there's, but it is a complicated budget year. There's a lot of things going on. School aid is always a major sticking point in that and I think that's complicated a little bit now by the Democratic primary, so we'll see what happens with regard to that. The, and then there's all the other sort of items that oddly, that I always think is oddly, get piled into the budget as part of those negotiations that aren't really budget issues. So, you know, funding for MTA and so on, there's just a lot of moving parts in this year's budget. But, but everything I've heard indicates that it should be done on time. And the governor's staked out, it's, I think it's very important to him that it be done on time, he's got a sort of unbroken string of on-time budgets and I think wants to be able to continue that streak.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? John?
Mark, with a shortfall here of $325,000, I know that's dependent on the state or could be, but if that stands, what do you look at to target to reduce that or, I mean, have to?
We go back and look, we have some, we have a transfer to capital still in the budget, so we take a look at that. We, we would take a look at whether we could appropriate reserves, whether we, whether we could go back and reduce, for example, in other areas of the budget, I might consider taking on a little bit of, of more risk in terms of future utility costs and so on. So, you know, we need to get it, we would need to get it down to that. I'm fairly confident that we should end up about where we need to be with regard to it after. The number that I keep hearing is around a billion dollars in terms of new state aid. That's significantly more than the governor proposed, so, you know, I'm, I don't think I have a lot of concern about it at this point and I think we haven't, that we would be able to, you know, even if we get halfway there, we can achieve it, so.
So programming would not be?
No, I wouldn't be looking at impacting program at all. We're not in that spot.
Okay. No others? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
All right. Board members, we're on page three of the agenda. Under Facilities, we have nothing for tonight. Under Financial Items, renewal of contract with Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council. The district contracts with Delphi for the provision of 2.6 substance abuse counselors with one counselor located at the high school, one located at Bay Trail and one split between the four elementary schools. The contract for high school and elementary counselors has been in place for a number of years. The Bay Trail counselor was added at the 2016-17 school year. The contract is recommended for approval. Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to finalize contract terms and enter into a contract for services with Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council for substance abuse counseling, education services for the 2018-2019 school year at a cost of $105,348. May I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Barb?
I have a comment.
I know at one point early on in my career on the school board, there was a possibility that it was going to be cut. And I was, I became a strong advocate then, and I continue to support this program wholeheartedly. And it's, I can't say enough about the wonderful people we've had in the past, and I'm pretty sure the new people are just as qualified.
And committed.
Yes.
They were, Mark and I were at the opioid seminar, and they were there, front and center. So very committed and very visible.
Yeah, very, very visible, both, you know, elementary, middle, and I'm glad to hear that at the middle school now and at the high school. And this program has been, now, this is my 11th year, and I know that it was here prior to that, but there was a time when we were actually considering cutting it, but we reconsidered.
Yes. Lisa, did you have a comment or question?
I was just voting.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Okay, I was like, oh, wait.
All right. So we did have the motion in a second, and we had our comments. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Dr. Putnam, would you like to take the policy review?
I would be happy to take policy review. So this is our first read on a number of policies. The first section in the agenda is our ongoing five-year review. So we're still in the 1,000 series, wrapping those up. These are all, the focus of all these are around Board of Education meetings and voting on budgets, and then questions and propositions at annual elections. So there are some minor changes. They're up on the web. People can go and look at them. The board did see them, and we collect that feedback and then bring it back to Policy Committee. We'll be meeting again Thursday to review that, and then hopefully they'll go on for a second read and approval at the next meeting. And then we also are continuing our process of editing, looking at the word ensure. We've been doing that this year, and you'll notice those are also up online for review. And when it comes to especially, I just want to point out, especially when it comes to legal issues, and especially around students with disabilities and our special education program, you'll notice that we left the word ensure in there in some areas because the board felt, the policy committee felt very strongly that these are things that we do need to ensure. And we need to focus on making sure that we support our students with disabilities in the CSE process. I think that's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We're on to President's remarks. We have the Board of Education schedule of meetings for the 2018-19 school year. It's hard to believe we're talking about that. But anyway, there it is. There's the draft. When will that be decided? Is that at the next meeting?
At the next meeting. So this is the first look at it, and then it'll be a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments on that? All right. Unfinished business? No unfinished business? Any new business for tonight? Okay, yes, Carol?
Yes, thank you, Catherine. So I wanted to let the board know and this community that... Thank you. I wanted to let the board know in this community that I would not be running for reelection this year for school board. So it's been a tough decision. I've been on the board for 15 years, served with four superintendents, you being number four, numerous teachers, administrators, parents, watching lots of students graduate, and that's been really great. I think, a bit emotional, it's been just wonderful to be on board that believes in a team. And as a team, we've worked on a lot. We've worked on communication, facilities. You know, I sat here trying to jot down what is it that we worked on, all the curriculum innovations that we had, the new programming. We've watched our schools just really flourish. Mark, when I look at the numbers that you posted up there, where our schools are, this is just amazing. The social, emotional part, I think that is just, I don't know, the cherry on top of the ice cream with everything we have done. That was the first thing that I ever, that was important to me, part of my first blurb on why I ran for school board. And, well, it took us a few years, but we got there. And seeing everything that we do now as far as social, emotional for our students, I think this is fantastic. But I look at all the board members, the past ones, the current ones, and hopefully the new ones that will be coming. It's been great working with you as a board member, as a vice president, as president for a few years, watching new presidents come on board. And it's, this is really great about Penfield, but it is really time to move on. You know, other opportunities, my professional life seems to be like eating up all of my hours right now. And, you know, I'll miss what I cannot do. You talked about some policies to review next year, and I was sitting thinking, oh, I'm not going to do that. So policies have always been something I absolutely loved, and, you know, I think I will miss this. You know, but, you know, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for this community, for the privilege and the honor of serving you.
Well, Carol. Well, I certainly understand your reasoning, and that's very big news. And you will be hard to replace.
New people coming for it, it'd be great. Yeah.
And again, I think we all owe you, you know, a big debt of gratitude because we are where we are today because you were in a leadership position when we had some very important issues to take care of. You and along with some of the other senior board members helped guide us through this. And we're in a fantastic place, and it's because you were there to take the burden, take the stress, take the load, and make sure things came out okay.
Thank you. I think we worked beautifully together, all of us.
Yeah, I think so, too.
It just goes that the superintendent's always the last to know. But I understand it must have been a very difficult decision. But, you know, we're always looking for stakeholder feedback when we do policy. So I know when I need somebody to sit on a committee, you realize you are, your phone number's not going away, so.
You're on speed dial.
All right.
Well, I really don't know what to say. I keep saying, wow, I think that's very big news, and it's, I can appreciate what a difficult decision that had to have been for you. Yeah, for sure. I'm really glad we have some time to digest it. Yeah. All right, well, where do we go from here, you know?
I had...
Okay, John?
But I did want to say, you know, when we served together for those three or four years, we had probably the worst and best of times.
True.
So ended up being the best by the time we got through. But we were really in the worst of times when I came on as vice president. But I appreciate, you know, we were able to work together and do things, and this is part of why we have Dr. Putnam and some other things. So, you know, I'm shocked, but I mean, there's more to say, I'm sure. But you will be missed.
For sure.
I just wanted to give an update. I mentioned Albany, and since we went to Albany, you know, Monroe County School Boards Association, Sherry and some of us have been in contact, you know, with Joe Morelli and our con, Morelli has a lot of power, obviously. And things are shifting every day on the table. But one of the things we keep emphasizing is, give us full funding so we can make our decisions that we want to make. And as much as we love grants for all the different things they've done, grants, and Mark knows because he's gone this route with me, grants are one year.
Right.
And then we hold the bag. And our whole point was, just give us, we showed charts, you know, we're, just like we have a GEA, we're down, and just give us the money, and we'll make decisions. And the other thing, too, is we said, you know, we're good decision makers. So this whole thing about the governor wanting to know for the school districts, how much is spent in each school, and we're like, you know, that's going nowhere, okay? And I think that's what I heard from Morelli's office today. That's one of those things, if it goes anywhere, it'll go with the big five schools because they can pester them all they want. But we said, you know, we're elected officials, we're competent. And so we just continue to get that message reiterated, you know, as we go through the budget. And the last thing I wanted to say is, a lot of you didn't have the chance to interact as I did as president of Monroe County School Boards Association with Louise Slaughter. And Louise was just, I mean, she was a friend of everybody, but education was forefront in what she did. And I worked with her, you know, for two or three different industries, but, you know, she was a champion of kids. And now, you know, Mr. Morelli's going to run, so, you know, the trickle-down effect, which means if he gets his party's nomination and happens to win, those of us in Brighton who are represented by him, we have to then see, you know, what will happen as far as that. So there's a continued trickle-down effect. But I think if it's Mr. Morelli or whoever, we want to make sure we keep that contact because, I mean, he's been a great believer in schools and a good friend, and, you know, the numbers in the district may support him, but who knows what will happen? But, and then we'll have someone else that we'll have to work with on the Brighton side of it that I think is a good idea. And Tom had mentioned, too, earlier this year, to maybe inviting Assemblyman Morelli to Indian Landing for, I can't...
Yeah, the Bike to School Day.
Yeah. So, you know, because he always talks about Brighton, Brighton, Brighton School District, and I'm sitting there saying, well, there's 20% of us. And, oh, yeah, yeah. But anyways, Louise, in a nutshell, was really a champion of kids.
Yeah, yeah, she's, I know. Yeah, boy, what a night.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes. Well. Anyone want to tell a joke just before we go? All right. Well, being no other board business, may I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:00 PM?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right.[1743.36]